Looks like we'll get started here shortly. Okay, seven o'clock, let's get started. Welcome everyone to Santaquin City Planning Commission Meeting. It is Tuesday, February twenty second, two thousand twenty-two. That's two twenty-two twenty-two for those of you who are keeping track. All right. Would anyone like to get us started tonight with a thought or an invocation?
I can do it, Charlie.
Okay.
Our dear Holy Father, we're grateful for this evening that we have to meet here as a planning commission and as members of this community. We are grateful for all the blessings that we enjoy living in this, this area and this country. We're grateful for the freedoms and for the rights and privileges that come with, with being a citizen. We ask that we can be effective tonight and that the best decisions can be made in the best interests of all involved. We're grateful for all that we have and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone like to lead us in the pledge tonight? Thank you.
Okay, please stand. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you. Okay. Before we get started tonight, I need to make amends. At our last meeting, Commissioner Howard, it was your first meeting and I totally neglected to welcome you to Planning Commission. I even asked you your name before the meeting, so.
That's okay.
It was silly. Welcome to Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thanks for being willing to give your time and your service to the city and we're glad you're here.
Yes, me too, thank you.
All right, so we've got the agenda up on the screen. We've got three items under discussion possible action. They're all public hearings. I think we'll get to those in that order if there's no objection. We show the public forum down at the bottom, but we normally do that right up front, so we're, we'll do that like we normally do. We'll do the public forum first and then we'll move into the normal agenda items. So for the members of the public who are here, the public forum is your opportunity to address the commission on anything that's on your mind. That said, if you've got comments related to the three public hearings that we've got, please just hold those comments till the public hearing and then we'll call on you then, but if there's anything else you want to talk to the commission about, the public forum is the time. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public forum at seven oh-two. Would anyone like to address the commission during the public forum? Okay, then we will close the public forum at seven oh-three. And we will just move right into agenda item number one. This is the Orchard Hills Storage Subdivision Concept Plan.
All right, so this is a, this is really a proposed subdivision. This is a concept plan, so there's no action required tonight. This is just feedback given to the applicant and then a public hearing for, for additional comments to be made on this proposed subdivision. We do know that it is anticipated that there will be proposal for storage units to be on the property, but for purposes of, of this agenda item, we're not going to get any, into any details about that. It's mostly just about the subdivision. This is a subdivision that was proposed. I guess I should say a similar subdivision was proposed a few years back. It did get most of the way through the approval process, but not all the way through and then it sat idle for a while and, and, and long enough that it ended up lapsing. So really this proposal has to start over and it is, is from the very start. So again, tonight is, is a subdivision concept review for a two lot subdivision. You can see the vicinity there, which is just south of Highland Drive and, and kind of around connects to one-twenty east, one-twenty south, excuse me. One-twenty east, I had it right the first time. So this, this is a proposed layout. Again, this is a concept plan, so there, there will likely be some changes. Really, this is very consistent with, with the way things were proposed before. But you'll, you'll see that there is one lot that is on the corner here of Highland Drive and one-twenty east. And then they have a second lot, which really is going to be the rest of the property. They show future development there, but that's really kind of a carryover from the, the, the last proposal, which had most of the engineering and stuff done for it. So they've kind of recycled and, and used that for purposes of, of getting feedback. This, this proposal did get reviewed by the, the Development Review Committee or DRC this morning. For those who don't know, the Development Review Committee makes up mostly staff members. You'll ha- have all the various departments, fire, police, public works, engineering. I should say we have John Lindell, our, our city engineer here tonight. He's really here for another agenda item, but he can certainly answer any questions that you might have in this specific area. Just a couple of highlights of, of some things that, that were talked about previously with, with, with the development. There is, it's kind of hard to see on this map, but, but there is what we've called a cherry stem of property that extends to the south from the property. North is, is, is left on, on the map that you see. So this, this little cherry stem area, the applicant has expressed that there's not a lot of development value to them with that property. The city does recognize and acknowledge that. And again, like, like was negotiated and talked about before, it's, it's expected to have a development agreement to kind of work out the details of what's done with that. But based on what was done before, that may be dedicated to the city. The city would probably like to see some improvements there for pedestrian connectivity. Because that is a major thoroughfare for that neighborhood to get over to Orchard Hills Elementary School. But for the time being, it'd probably be left undone and there'd be a, a future project to, to fully construct that road. On this map, it says that UDOT owns this property. That, that property has been basically converted over to the city, because UDOT doesn't have any need for that anymore. And so along with private property owners to the, the east, there, there may be some things done to, to help build that road at some point in the future and, and, and give, give frontage frontage improvements and, and accessibility with, with that in the future. Moving a little to the north of that, after the dedication of the road, there'll be some property again to the east of that road. There's, there's some significant grates and things like, like that for, for some utilities, mostly for Summit Creek Irrigation Company. There are some safety concerns that are expressed on that and those are things that we'd want to have addressed either by the applicant or by the city. But again, if we're going to make that a, a pedestrian thoroughfare for kids, we, we want to make sure things are safe. But there may be something that are worked out where, where there's a, an improved trail in lieu of the curb gutter and sidewalk requirements that would be in that area. It would likely still have curb and gutter, but, but maybe a trail that, that would connect and perpetuate kind of that pedestrian access there. So there's also some, some right-of-way discrepancies that, that the city would, would need to work with the applicant on to, to, to straighten out some property lines there along one-twenty east. And then there's also some improvements that the city has done along Highland Drive, which normally would be subdivision improvement requirements for the subdivision and the city went forward with that and, and will be negotiating and working with the applicant to, to recoup, recoup costs for the work that was done there to, again, provide some good pedestrian connectivity for kids with this being next to Orchard Hills Elementary School. And I think I mentioned this lot does have an existing home on it. Back when this went through an approval process, it never quite got finally approved and recorded, but, but there, there were some there was some, some lot lines that were recorded with the county that were done improperly, so this will clean that up and, and, and make it so that, that subdivision is done properly. So really, the entire property is, is really under reconsideration for, for the subdivision, even though there's, there's some things happening on the ground by practice that, that weren't necessarily approved. So I think that's, that's really probably the sufficient enough introduction. And we're here to answer any questions that you have. Again, this is a concept, so we've, we've provided the applicant with a lot of red lines that the staff has seen. There's still a lot of information that, that we will still need to receive to, to, you know, maybe answer some, some of the more thorough questions that people have. But for tonight's purpose, it's really, they're here to listen and I should say we have the applicants here on the front row. They're here to listen so that they can use that, that information to prepare a preliminary plan and, and move forward through the process. So we can answer any questions that you have and otherwise we'll look to you to hold a public hearing and, and provide your feedback.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Since the applicants are here, I would just give you an opportunity. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that presentation? Would you state your name for the record, please?
Ben Lakey of Orem, Utah with Orchard Hills Storage. I, I think that pretty well surmises everything. I think the biggest issue, there was lots of little issues, but then I think the biggest issue is the recoupment of some of those expenses and then the safety for what is a pedestrian thoroughfare through our property currently to get to the school mostly. And just looking at some of the stuff in the neighborhood, some of the other, I mean, really it's about getting that whole, those boxes graded over so that you can't fall into them. Or that there's, there's not huge holes in them now, but you know, there's four square foot gaps in some places and stuff like that. And so we'd have to figure out how to replace those and cover them up.
Okay. Very good, thanks. So we'll do the public hearing and then depending on what kind of feedback we get during the public hearing, or if there's questions from the commission, we might call you back up to.
Perfect, thank you.
Answer some questions, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead with the public hearing now on item number one. Open the public hearing at seven eleven. Would anyone like to address the commission during the public hearing for the Orchard Hills Storage Subdivision? Okay, in that case, we will close the public hearing at seven eleven. And we'll open up, up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Jason, does it? I can't really see where's the ingress and egress going into the property, because it's mainly a lot to, right? That the storage units will be on?
Correct, and, and I think it'll, it'll be a part of the, what was labeled as future development. Sorry, this isn't taking a bit to load. So at this point, it's, it's just, it's just the subdivision of the property. Site plan for the the proposed storage units would probably detail more of where those things will be. But, but dedication of, of public roads that are needed. And, and really along that one-hundred-and-twenty east, there's already curb gutters, curb gutter and sidewalks, so they, they do have some of the necessary subdivision improvements done already, but some of those details about where their access will be will be more more fleshed out at the, the site plan level.
Okay.
So Orchard Hills is just kind of to the top there, right?
Neebo School District property right here.
And what is? So you, you mentioned that one-hundred east may extend through the property. What's on the other side of that?
On the south side?
Yeah, on the south side.
Yeah, so it.
On the right side.
It slopes off quite a bit to the, to the south and that's where that Summit Creek Irrigation property is.
Basin is, right?
So you're talking about the, the UDOT property that Jason discussed or?
Well, I kind of assumed that one-hundred east as it hooks to the right there would go straight across and connect to whatever's on the right.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
So one-hundred east to subdivision.
Okay.
It was where that cherry stem.
Yeah, and is there a stub over there that that would connect to?
There's a stub over there, but like I say, this property will likely be dedicated to the city and be a future project to, to provide that connectivity. And that'll be something that'll be needed work on in, in a development agreement. And that, that was previously worked out. And again, the details of that were, there was going to be kind of a temporary improved trail, not asphalt, but maybe like some compacted road base or something for, for good access that way. But again, because they have no frontage along there, that's something that was negotiated and, and would be probably a future project to provide that, that road connectivity.
Okay, so you, so you're sort of anticipating that it would be sort of a preliminary walkway with a future road?
Right.
Okay.
And again, that's what was, was worked out last time. This is a whole new process with, with different people, but we're, we're anticipating that, that some of those discussions will probably be just happen again and, and be carried over to this.
Right, so I know the applicant mentioned maybe some concerns with some of those issues, but we appreciate that you're willing to engage in that conversation with the city. You know, pedestrian walkway or a road through there would be a great asset to the city to provide that connectivity, so.
And, and some of the things that they were talking about was the work that the city has done here on Highland Drive.
Right, yeah.
So Highland Drive, we, we rerouted that, so it goes in perpendicular to Canyon Road, which makes it a safer intersection. As part of that project, there was some, there was a trail really, an, a ten-foot wide asphalt trail that went through there and that provided that pedestrian connectivity through that area, which, which was on the, the northern boundary of their property. And so that was something the city moved forward with and something that we'll, we'll coordinate with them to recoup those costs.
Okay.
That the city put into that.
Very good. Other thoughts, questions, commissioners? Remind me, which one of these lots has a home on it or which, which one would remain residential?
Number one.
Right there.
And you can see that square right there. That's the, the the shape of, of where the, the home is on the property and the, the shape of the home.
And is there any concerns with how that irrigation easement would impact the development, the proposed, the thought about development?
There's, yeah, if you want to speak to that.
There's a lot of, as Jason mentioned, there was, previously there was a lot of engineering work that was done. It was anticipated that that would be piped through there, that ditch, so that they're, that they could still use that, that area or surrounding it, you know, to be able to drive across it through the pipes. And then as it goes down the steep grade towards underneath the freeway and our Highland Drive, just to help make that so it makes it a little bit more usable for them as they're traveling around it. But that's what's, what was looked at previously and as we start to roll through that design, what would be done.
Yeah, a lot of details to be worked out. I get it. We're just talking about the subdivision, which is pretty basic and there's not much to talk about there, so we gotta go somewhere, right?
Lots, lots of piping and, and fencing to mitigate safety concerns.
Right. Okay. All right, anything else on the subdivision concept as presented? We're just providing feedback, so no action on this one? Okay.
There's quite a grade change there. Is that going to affect things?
That's part of the engineering design. As we go through there, there's, yeah, as, as you mentioned, right there on that kind of southeast side of Highland Drive, it does go up quite steep there. It's about a two to one right now, which is fairly steep. Previous, previous grading, they lowered it a little bit. We'll, we're going to wait and see what they submit in regards to that to make sure they do it. One of the major things is, is they've got to make sure any stormwater that's started on there, anytime it rains, that water needs to stay on site. It can't go, it can't leave it, so.
All right, anything else? Okay, very good. I think we've provided some feedback, so thanks to the applicant for being here. Appreciate your time. And we will move on then to agenda item number two. This is a conditional use permit for the Wall Brothers Orchard Venue.
All right, so the location for this proposed conditional use permit is on Highway one-ninety-eight. This is in the, the Walls Orchard, which is just north of, of what people are probably most familiar with. The, the Gray Cliffs Development, which was a development agreement was approved a couple of months ago, but they, their plans still need to come back for the preliminary plan. But I think a lot of people are, are familiar with Gray Cliffs because they see a lot of the work that's being done up there with the mass grading. So this is just north of that. And it's a parcel that's right on Highway one-ninety-eight. We do have Chris Wall here, who's the applicant. The conditional use permit proposal is for a reception center. And with a conditional use permit, it's, it's a little bit more high level. You're looking more at, is it, at, at the use being appropriate for the, the property. I should reiterate, conditional use permits are, are generally permitted uses that have conditions attached to them because there may be more impacts with that particular use. This is, this is in an agricultural zone. A reception center is the conditional use. And so staff has, has worked with Mr. Wall to, to look at kind of high-level components of this, this proposal. There will be a detailed site plan that will need to take place and, and be approved with the DRC. But we have looked and, and, and they will be able to provide utilities. They're going to provide sewer in the form of a septic tank. Water lines will work. They have an access to the property that, that should work, although there will need to be some coordinating with UDOT. Because SR one-ninety-eight is a UDOT facility. We don't have any concerns with, with, we've kind of joked about landscaping. They've already got like seven hundred trees or something like that there, so. I think landscaping will probably be pretty good. And they've showed us some preliminary renderings of the building, which for architectural review purposes will be probably one of the easiest ones, because nothing looks more agrarian than a barn. So the only thing that really probably needs a little bit more, more work and detail through the site plan process would be the parking. They've got pretty close to adequate parking based on, on the anticipated number of people that would be in the building. There's some parking island requirements, things like that, but nothing major. We, we see that it's got room and, and there'll be a few things that will need to be worked out at the site plan. But for the most part, it looks like a great project. And, and they have the space they need to make this work. So for tonight's purposes, the Planning Commission would be the land use authority for granting a conditional use permit. There are criteria in our code. We could pull that up if you'd like to. And I'm not quite sure why that, that died. We'll but, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll, we can look at those more, but, but those, those criteria are really kind of more general in, in nature. There's no specific conditional use criteria for this specific use. So really, it's going to be more general type of things that you're going to look at.
Okay. Maybe while you guys are looking at that, since Mr. Wall is here, I'll give him a chance to add anything to that presentation if you'd like.
I don't know what you want to know, other than what they've told you. We're just trying to keep our farming business and the best way is to bring people in and do different things.
Okay.
We're planning on making it as nice as we possibly can up there.
Yeah. Very good.
Any questions?
Are you guys having it? Are you selling any products out of that facility? It would be more like hosting weddings, parties.
Yeah, just a venue to do that.
Okay.
Have you had to have a perk test?
Not yet. That's what was, was coming to you first before we got there.
Yeah, so there's, there's still a lot of, again, with the site plan application, as we start to roll through with this, there's, there's looking at stuff like first, for septic, where you need to have some sort of perk rate. You need to have septic tanks are controlled by Utah County Health Department. So they'd have to have the permit from them to have to provide that to us. Ensuring they have adequate water, which there's some water sources on the site that you could use to do it. As Jason mentioned, parking, there's got to be fire protection, appropriate fire flows and that kind of stuff that would be in play as well. They have to be that are in our code already.
And we've talked to UDOT about the access. It's just designing it to meet their. Exactly.
Okay, all right, thanks, Mr. Wall. We may call you back up. Okay, we've got a public hearing on this one, so let's do that now. I will open the public hearing at seven twenty-three. Would anyone like to address the commission during the public hearing on the Wall Brothers Orchard Venue? Please. State your name for the record for us if you would.
My name's Sarah Jorgensen and I just came to say some positive things about it. I wasn't sure what else would be said, but I think it is an awesome idea. A lot of talk has been had throughout the city for agritourism and I think this is a really creative way of using it. I have nothing to do with it. I just think it's really cool. I know the reception center that's in Payson is crazy busy all the time and having something so close to the Payson Temple is awesome. So I just wanted to give my support of it.
Great, thanks, Sarah. Would anyone else like to address the commission during the public hearing? Okay, then we will close the public hearing at seven twenty-four. Okay. Well, I, since we don't deal with conditional use permits very often, and we have a number of new commissioners, I think it'd be beneficial for all of us if we could just talk about that a little bit. If you don't mind running through that again. I know you did kind of a brief overview, but I think it'd be helpful for us to kind of review what those factors are that can be considered and kind of how the process works.
Yeah, so ideally, and this, this is probably a, a future project for us to work on, but usually if it's, if something's listed as a conditional use permit in our code, we need to have specific criteria for that. Now, we have criteria that's considered for all conditional uses, but it's, it's understood that maybe that's not maybe adequate for purposes of looking at specific conditional use permits, particularly when, when some of those criteria are a little bit harder to, they're not as subjective. They're a little bit more subjective and, and open-ended. So these are the criteria that we have in our code that are still general and, and we can still use those. Again, conditionally these permits, I don't look at them as, as a way, you know, either yes or no to, to what they're proposing. It's usually yes, but here's some things that, that can be approved conditionally in order to mitigate potential impacts. Again, usually those impacts need to be thought out previously and listed as, as part of those conditional uses. So again, that's probably a project we need to do a little bit better on. We do have specific conditional uses in in our code. You know, for instance, like mass grading is a conditional use permit and we have a whole list of things that, that need to be met in order for that conditional use to, to be granted. So for purposes of this one, you know, there's, there's some criteria there that, that can that can be referenced. But you know, in my, my observation of this, I don't see any conflict. You know, I agree with what's been said. I think this is a, a great use that will support the agricultural operation that's there. It's obviously harmonious in, in terms of how it functions and how it looks. And so I, I don't really see an issue there, but, but really this is for the, the Planning Commission to review and to consider and happy to, to provide any assistance that I can.
Okay, thanks for that. Yeah, along those lines, I mean, the only, I mean, we're typically considering impacts on surrounding properties, right? But they are really the surrounding property themselves. I mean, there's things like, you know, parking, like you mentioned, but that would be considered as part of the normal application process, so that's not really a consideration for a conditional use permit. Do we have any concern about the septic system and how that could potentially impact anyone out there?
No, most, most time you have to watch for septic systems, a lot is with their groundwater. And my understanding, the groundwater is fairly deep. I don't know exact elevation. But I do know that there is, that's one of the things they consider and look at when they're, when they're doing that, so.
Those septic systems are reviewed and approved by the, by Utah County, so there's not any sewer that's in the vicinity, so that's actually their only option and, and until such time that sewer is run up, you know, that, that far north and, and then they would be required to, to connect onto that.
Right. Okay. Any concerns or questions pertaining to the conditional use permit or just to the application in general?
Yeah, I just wondered with the UDOT access, how close it would be to any Gray Cliffs UDOT access, because it can only, it has to be so far apart. So I know that'll go into account when you're planning it more to see.
Gray Cliffs, what I understand, there's another entrance down a little ways. And UDOT's working with them on that.
And they've approved, like, as long as they approve.
Any of it yet.
Okay.
The UDOT guy didn't even know anything about Gray Cliffs. They sent it to him, but he didn't know, so.
You guys get in there first and then, yeah.
There's still some coordination that'll, that'll have to happen.
They said we were far enough from our, we have an access on the north side of our property.
That you may be able to use.
Throw on the south side and then Gray Cliffs, they're planning on putting it farther.
Okay.
I can't remember the exact distance, but.
So many feet apart. And with parking, I just went to an event center, a new one, and it's still, I didn't feel like it had enough parking. So if you guys feel like you're getting busy, you're getting enough traffic, do would you plan to extend that parking?
Yeah, we talked about that in the meeting I had with the city that we could expand.
Because the parking, you know how it is when you go in a parking lot.
We hope it's successful enough.
And we're going to have big trucks and stuff, you know, you're gonna people are gonna have to have a good parking stall.
Yeah, for sure.
So, okay, that's all I have right now.
Yeah, good questions.
Where's the water coming from?
So my understanding, there's a well that's further north, an existing well, that he would need to outfit a little So my understanding, um, there's a well that's further north than existing well that he would need outfit a little bit to increase the flow.
We have a fifty horse, ten inch well that we water the whole hill with. We have to make it adequate, we might put a bigger pump or something in to make it for sure it works.
Just know we don't have water lines down there.
And it has to be on twenty-four seven, and it has to have a backup generator too.
I don't have a question, I just wanna say kudos to you. Um, appreciate that you have a farm and you're just wanting to keep the farm and keep it going and finding a way to make that work for you and your family, and. I'm really excited about this idea, and this, I know this is something the city's really been wanting to focus on, especially with the Imagine San Quentin thing of. How can we keep our farmers here, how can we keep them in business, what do we need to do, and this is definitely along those lines, and so. And you're doing your homework for everything needed, and I can tell, and it's awesome, so that's.
Yeah, well said, thanks. All right, anything else? Is that um, parcel that the that they show that uh, building being built on, is that already a separate parcel?
It is, yep. And there's nothing else on the parcel except trees, so it's, I don't I don't foresee that there need to be any subdivision or anything done, it's it's an existing parcel. That they can put this use on.
Cool, seems like a good fit. Any other concerns or questions or anything we need to discuss? Okay, so on this, we are the approving body for conditional use permits, so we're looking for a motion to approve, um, approve with commission, with conditions, excuse me. Or deny with uh, with findings.
We got a recommended motion upon, if if you'd like to reference.
I won't try to wing it, just read what's on the screen.
Okay, I I can recommend the motion. To approve the conditional use permit for the proposed Wall Brothers Orchard Venue with the following conditions. One, that the applicant completes the city's site plan process, including DRC and ARC reviews. And two, a business license to be obtained before operation.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, let's vote on the motion, Commissioner Hoffman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wade.
Aye.
Commissioner Mcneff.
Aye.
Commissioner Nixon.
Aye.
Commissioner Howard.
Aye.
Commissioner Romero.
Aye.
Commissioner Wood.
Aye.
Conditional use permit is approved unanimously. All right, thank you very much to the applicants for being here, we appreciate your time. So with that, let's move on to agenda item number three, this is an amendment on the standards and specifications.
Okay, Jason, turn the mic to me, so, um, every, we try to do this once a year, we're a little behind on this this update. But periodically, we update, and you're just laughing at me, but um, we try to do this once a year. To essentially to address any concerns or issues that come up during the construction of subdivisions or city projects or that kinda thing is as we roll forward. And periodically, they're they're updated, cuz technologies change, materials change, we find items that need to be addressed from Public Works. And so that's kind of what um, we'll go through kinda these these items, so you have any questions, I can explain kind of what we're anticipating doing it. Um, there's a few items, if you'll scroll down, or if you want me to move your your mouse, Jason, I can take it, but. Go down to the errata. So the items in blue are what's proposed to be changed, um, there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of letters kinda matched together. But to summarize essentially what we're doing in this, in the first section, vision three, is we're taking out. If you notice in your front yard, if you got pressurized irrigation, you've got a green box, those green boxes don't take well to trucks and cars driving over them. And so to address that, um, we're switching over to a traffic rated box. It's still a plastic box, but it's meant to be driven, it can handle being driven over, a lot better than the green ones can. So that's the intention here, and then um, there's also a an update to the meter valve, basically. It brings it into compliance with the standard drawing that we have.
So what what we found recently is is we have some narrower lots where people want to have like a secondary driveway or something, or or extend their driveway. And that box is right where they're trying to drive into that that extra third car uh, parking area. And so, doesn't work well to have that there and then have them driving on it and and ruining those those boxes, which technically are owned by the city because uh, you know. The city has to go through and and maintain those meters and and uh, and read those meters in order to a- apply the 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 bill. So, this is basically just just increasing that standard so that our, those boxes don't get damaged anymore.
Any questions on that one?
So does this, is this just for future boxes, it won't go back and change anything that?
Nope, so basically, anything going forward, so starting from the time the the city council. Approves the um, amendments or the change to the standards and specifications, at that point is when that trigger goes. Um, and it's any application that we receive after that time. We do talk to contractors and developers and say, hey, we have adjust, we have changed our specs for developments that are being constructed now and request, hey. Can you put these in for us? We can't make them yet until um, new applications from this time forward come into play, so.
So if somebody with an existing residence is having an issue with their boxes always being broken, is there something in place for them to come if this gets? Motioned through to be able to have that replaced, or how does that?
There has been discussion with Public Works on on to do that. One option that has been, I think it's getting close to what the process that we're going through, is that essentially. The city would provide the labor to install it, and the the resident would purchase the box, so it can be done. I I don't know exact costs on off the top of my head, but um, it's not extravagant, it's not like it's five hundred dollars. It's, it is less than that, but it would, essentially it saves the the cost of installation cuz the city will come out.
And they'll do it.
I don't know for sure if that's exactly what's been set yet, but that's what's been discussed.
Okay, I just know that's been an issue with a few boxes.
Yep, there's some development, so you drive through and everyone was busted. The next, they say, any other questions on that? Now I'll move to three A, simple line, um, we've had, there's some. Meters, uh, culinary water meter, so you're switching to the cast iron, black ring or lid that's next to the PI meter. Um, if you notice, there's a little black plastic on the top of it. Some of, most of the older ones are uh, those black plastic, that's what holds the radio, that's tells the truck, hey, this is how much water has been used. That can get hit by lawnmower blades, uh, weed whacker string, that breaks that up, and it it damages it, so we have to replace it. This is calling for that that uh, meter that can be, or on the lid, a little recessed area that can sit down and be protected. And that's what this, that three A is discussing on there. The vision five, if there's no other question on that one. Division five is essentially within the sewer spec that states, and this brings it in conformance with state state code, I've given the rule there. Um, R three seventeen, da 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 da, um, basically says a maximum distance between sewer manholes is four hundred feet. So that's just bringing our spec under up to state code. Division six, there's um, can't tool. This, we're kind of together in two different locations, but basically for any butterfly valves, this is to address a concern that's um. To make sure we get appropriate butterfly valves within our systems. Some, not all butterfly valves are made equal, some, there's some valves we have installed in the city, the butterfly valves that we can't really turn off. So, um, and so that's to, this is to give us the ability to say, hey, this is the valve we want to be installed. Um, division twelve. Um, this is in relation to placing curb and gutter. Typically, so this spec basically says, as it currently reads, that within curb gutter and sidewalk. Uh, what they call an expansion joint, so it's a little foam insert that goes in the concrete to allow for that concrete to to move and expand. Um, our spec currently says three, every thirty feet, that that needs to be within curb. Um, that is a bit excessive, um, so we've extended that to a hundred feet. When they are using what they call slip form method, um, basically, it's they use a machine to place the concrete. They don't put hand forms up with wood and stuff, they run a machine that places the curb and forms it in one long pole. And so, that's what that that changes, is basically says, if they do that form, they do the machine to pour it. Then they have to put that expansion joints in at every one hundred feet. And that's, again, to help what, to help reduce all concrete cracks, but it helps to reduce that and also from concrete buckling and popping up. Section seventeen, this is a, because you, um, communications. And fiber optic is starting to become a a pretty important uh, utility right now. This section is being updated to include communication conduit. Um, to be placed within every new subdivision, uh, two two-inch conduits that um, the city would own. Um, after the developments gone through, that would allow um, contractors and providers such as Century Link, such as CentraCom. Um, and any other new companies that may come up that would want to install those within the city. To have a conduit already in place, they could just go and pull it in, put their boxes where they um, would need to. And um, be able to get those put in.
I like this, I like that, cuz then they're not trenching through the yard and.
They're not having to dig in city roadways, they're not having to dig in yards, it's just to to kinda help, help do that, and so that's what this this section's covering going. Um, division twenty is um, an update to allow for. Kinda give direction on how much gravel needs to go in a gravel driveway next to the primary driveway. Um, just so that we know they're getting the appropriate gravel depth there, and not just putting in a half, you know, half inch worth of gravel there. Gives them some depth, makes it so that gravel driveway will hold up, so that's in the landscaping division there. Kinda ran through those quicks, are any questions, wanna cover thoughts?
On the expansion joints, that's specifically for curb and gutter?
Yes.
And is a hundred feet excessive, or kind of in the sweet spot?
It's kind of more in the sweet spot, um, there are some specifications out there that say you don't need to have an expansion joint. There's some specifications like our thirty foot that are are a little excessive for for curb and gutter. Sidewalk's another story, that's not changing, they do need to have expansion joints in sidewalks every thirty feet, that's not changing, it's only within curb and gutter.
What makes the machine form different than the hand form? Expansion a hundred feet compared to thirty?
It's more consistent, because as the, as you're running that, you're not doing, cuz when you hand form. You can't put in hundreds of feet of of curb and gutter in one go, you're putting in a hundred foot sections, or you're putting it. There's just so much more inconsistency and and in the placement of that, so that's um, that's the difference there. Um, we'll go and pull up the the drawings, the standard drawings, so there's one item that I do want to to discuss. Let's see, which one's the first one, so curb and gutter five, um, CG five, so this this specification drawing. Is in regards to the thickness of sidewalks and the road base under that, basically the thickness of the sidewalk and the support under it. Um, with this, we're proposing to increase the thickness of the sidewalk from four inches to five inches. What that does is it gives it more more structure, and is less likely to break during construction of homes. And also longevity wise, um, yep. If you drive down any new subdivision, new development that's in, where there's a lot of homes being built, you look at sidewalks, they are cracked, they are busted. Um, and so that would, this gives us that, just that much more little structure to help um, support that, to help prevent that. It also will help at the end of the warranty period that we have for any development, end of the two-year warranty period. That what it does is it says, it'll, it's, it saves work because we're not having to go and count every section of sidewalk that needs to be replaced. And then have to go back and do it, it's it's hopefully an effort to reduce the damage to that. And the work that's gotta be done at the two-year warranty period to replace all those, again, that's done by the developer. And um, at the end of that two-year warranty period, not the city, and so. Um, the next one, again, just updating the PI box to changing the the. Calling out the appropriate box there, let's hit on that one. So this is um, a discussion on street cross-sections. The next two sheets kind of are discussing that, this one basically is going to be removing. This fifty-five foot wide rural local road cross-section. Because, and it's also similar to one on the next sheet down, is that it doesn't provide enough. Roadway width, asphalt width, to meet fire code with parking and and everything else associated with it. So this this section of the local, the rural local, local. Um, and then on the next sheet, that's the, yeah, this is ST um, three, basically. Adding a note saying that the fifty-five foot wide cross-section that's in um, most developments within Foot Hill Village. And again, there's exceptions to, um, Summer Ridge is a whole different animal. But most roads, um, such as, trying to think, most of the Foot Hill Village roadways are that fifty-five foot wide local road. Um, basically saying that that won't, that cross-section won't be used anymore. What we're going to is the sixty-two foot wide roadway width, which gives us more asphalt. It'll give us two travel lanes, one in each direction, plus an eight-foot parking on each side of asphalt.
So is there a spelling error, it says twenty-six foot, is it si- supposed to be sixty-two on the red part, yeah? I'm like, nothing changed.
Yeah, so the twenty-six foot private street, that one has been removed since twenty seventeen. However, there were some developments that were in place at the time. That, and and a good example of that one is the Summer Ridge Town Homes. The home, the roads that kind of go between the houses that are where the garages are at. Those are a narrower uh, private road that meet this this cross-section, but again, that was coming in before that that change occurred.
To make it clear, it's not proposed that these be removed, it's proposed that a note be on there that any new development would need to to uh, apply. Other road cross-sections and not these ones, we need to have these still there because there are some development agreements that still allow for some of those narrow cross-sections. And we need to have that standard there to to identify what that needs to look like. But really, it's basically getting rid of our 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 um, narrowest cross-section, fifty-five feet. And our new narrowest cross-section would be the sixty-two foot, again, there's still some some areas where that would apply uh, as per development agreement, but. Yeah, that's that's why they're not. They're not proposed to be removed, they're not Xed out, it's just adding language that explains that from this date forward, or the date of of uh, this being approved. That it uh, a different road cross-section would need to be applied. Probably a good time to mention that that for tonight's purposes, we have a public hearing, and this would be a recommendation from the planning commission. And it wouldn't come into effect until the the council approves it, now, council still may have discussion on this, it's not, you know, this isn't locked in stone. But this is uh, with with coordination of engineering and and uh, and and council's been brought up to speed in their last work session of some of the things that are being worked on. This is kind of the the direction that it'll seem like it'll go.
Any other questions on the cross-sections? Okay, um, the next one, again, is just updating the this, uh, this, the water meter. Correlating the the text that we looked at earlier with the drawing, so as um. Most people, I'm one of them, uh, if there's a good picture that describes it, it's a lot easier than reading paragraphs and paragraphs of text, so. Again, this is another update, um, to uh, this fifty-five foot wide cross-section that Jason talked about. Another item that's on this sheet in particular is the cul-de-sac radius, the amount of asphalt that's in there. This is based on the fire code, what is called out in it, which is requires 96-foot of travelable surface with inside. So essentially from the gutter to gutter is, is what that diameter needs to be. So those two call-outs there are basically adjusting the radius that it calls in so that we were able to meet that. It is a bit, it makes cul-de-sac a little bit bigger than what we'd had previously. Then the next one, I believe, is that it? Okay, that's it.
Okay. Very good.
Any questions?
Thanks, Sean. While you're thinking about it, let's do the public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing on this one at 7:50. Would anyone like to address the commission during the public hearing on the Standards and Specifications Amendment? Okay, then we will close the public hearing at 7:51. All right, we discussed, some, some of the questions came up. We had some discussion, but any other thoughts or questions or concerns on this? Pretty straightforward. I think John knows who he's talking about. It all seems reasonable. Okay, it's our job then to provide a recommendation to the city council, so I'd look for a motion to that effect.
If I could read it, I would do it.
You don't do it?
I'll zoom in on that, Jason, so she can see it.
I'm even wearing glasses and I can't see. All right.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission forward, is it staff's recommendation? The Planning Commission move forward with proposed amendments to the city council for approval.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a lot of seconds. Who claimed that one, just for the record?
I guess I did.
Let's vote on that. Commissioner Wood, aye. Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Commissioner Howard?
Aye.
Commissioner Nixon?
Aye.
Commissioner McNeff?
Aye.
Commissioner Wade?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffman? All right, that, the Standards and Specifications Amendment is forwarded with a positive recommendation to the city council, and it was unanimous. Okay, we're done with that. Any other business we need to discuss? We don't have minutes yet for our last meeting, so we'll look for those next time. But staff, anything else we need to talk about?
I don't think I have anything to report tonight. Happy to answer your questions you have.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners?
The next meeting, isn't that with the city council on the 8th?
Oh, so I can talk about that. So we, we did anticipate that March 8 would be a joint Planning Commission-City Council. That timeline's not going to work out anymore. That, that joint meeting will probably be in April sometime. We'll, we'll let you know, and we'll give you a sufficient heads-up so that you can plan accordingly. But it'll probably, most likely happening on, happen on a night during a regular Planning Commission meeting. So you'll, you'll probably be here anyways, but it's something that we'll, we'll need to communicate with the, the council when we've got that locked in. But yeah, the general plan process is still moving forward. There's a lot of review, reviewing of, of the, the written draft of it. And so we're, we're trying to wrap that up and then have a committee meeting to, to get some feedback from the committee. And then, and then it'll move forward to kind of a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting. Hopefully, that'll be more of a, more of a casual setting where you can really have some open dialogue about, about the draft that's there. And then following that meeting, we would have a formal public hearing to have the Planning Commission consider the general plan and, and provide a recommendation to the city council who would be the approval body for that. So our hope is that sometime end of April, we'll, we'll have the general plan mostly wrapped up. But again, there's, there's still some reviewing happening, and so it pushed the, the schedule back a little bit.
Yeah, good question. I had totally forgotten about that, so I'm glad you brought it up. All right, anything else, commissioners? Last call? All right, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Oh, come on, you guys.
So moved.
All right, we adjourned at 7:54.